Good evening, bonsoir. Welcome to the committee of the hall on Monday evening July twelve. Bienvenue à la réunion plénière ce soir. Merci d'être parmi nous, les amis sur Facebook, les citoyens sur Facebook. Mrs. Saint-Laurent, do we have any declaration of conflict of interest? Est-ce que nous avons des conflits d'intérêt?
Non, aucun.
Non, aucun, okay. This evening, we will start with a presentation from Shannon Levine, which is a teacher at Bathurst High School. And I do want to acknowledge that Audrey Reynolds is here as well. They have been doing wonderful work for the community. So Shannon, if you want to come up and say, do your presentation, thank you.
Good evening, Your Worship.
Oh, hold on, I'm gonna...
Councilors, citizens of Bathurst. So we are here today to share a project that we accomplished this year. I just want to tell you a little bit about it. And then I have some maybe recommendations or hopefully a partnership that we can develop with the city. So this year Bathurst High held their first annual cleanup, street cleanup. We decided to stick to the area around the school, so anything within walking distance was our goal. It was held during the weeks of May tenth and May seventeenth. Fortunately, the weather was beautiful, which definitely played a part in our success, I'm sure, because everyone wanted to be outside. Yeah, so I'm just going to tell you a little bit about our event. So we did need some partners for this event, obviously the city of Bathurst. We were able to get garbage bags, gloves, and real good work gloves for the students. Garbage pickup was also offered. So anytime we had a collection, as you've seen the picture here in front of our school, we would contact the city and they would come and dispose of it for us. Ducks Unlimited was also a partner, so we work through Daily Point with Ducks Unlimited and we get a grant every year for $500 for the Wetlands Center of Excellence. So I was able to use those funds to purchase safety vests for the students and as well some grabbers, so they didn't have to go too deep in the brush to collect their garbage. Also, Incorp Atlantic has a Recycling Hero Community Cleanup Grant, so we were able to receive $500 from them. That paid for the decals on the vests, some water and snacks for the students. And also, they provided us with 100 pairs of gloves, masks with their logo, and promotional items such as stickers and pins and so on. So these are the vests that we had printed. So we do have a print shop in-house now at Bathurst High, so that was a great partnership with our group at school. And we decided to print Phantom Pride on the bottom, as you can see here, because we want our students to take pride in our community, and this is a way for them to do that. So the process was quite simple, so I had my classroom as a hub and people would come and sign up for a time, but also a location. I kept track of which streets were done, so that we wouldn't overlap. I wanted the kids to actually see garbage on the streets, I didn't want them going over, you know, an area that was already done. So these are the streets that we were able to accomplish, so anything around our school area, as you can see, is pinned here. These are the areas we were able to to collect garbage. We also ventured out a little bit, because we did secure some transportation, even though it was a little difficult with COVID. We had a few teachers that were going out that had their bus license, so they were able to take their students out to Shalor Street, out to St. Anne, some problem areas that we had noticed. So the results, it was a two-week period. We went through 100 industrial-sized garbage bags, just in that area, and they were pretty full with litter. Some of them were doubled up because of piercing of bags and so on, but for the most part, I would say, a good 80 of these bags were actually full of garbage. We collected nine tires, as you can see the gentleman on the left here picking up some tires, from another problem area that we found not far from our school. A barbecue arranged, thousands of cigarette butts from really determined students. 221 refundable containers, which is part of the Incorp Atlantic requirement, is that if you do find anything refundable, you don't throw it out, you have to refund. So we have a program at school, so we just diverted that that way. And a lot of plastic, obviously wrappers and such. We were very impressed with the students' willingness to participate, to get their hands dirty, to really go deep to find some of these things. So it was a fantastic opportunity for them. We thought it was a huge success. We had 44 classes participate, which equates to 44 hours of street cleaning over that two-week period, and only one rain day. So it was actually a perfect time to get this done. This results in 342 students participating, so some of these students could be repeats, because they could have gone with, say, math class, and then again with environmental science. So there are some repeats, but 342 students signed up for the event. And our numbers are just below 500, so that's a good participation. There was lots of media attention, which we did not totally expect, but the great thing is, it was really positive. So the only negative thing we saw was, I can't believe there's so much garbage, which we kind of weren't surprised by, but everything else was very positive. There was a lot of passersby that would comment to the students what a great job they were doing, which really had a big impact on them, because they're not necessarily used to being seen for positive things. So it was good for them to see that we can actually do some good in the community. There's a little before and after there, I know it's small, but that's just on Shalor Street, where Ass Stuff cuts off, there's a little behind Burger King, I guess. There's a little ditch that has water in it, and it was very polluted, so we were able to do before and after of that area, but I wish I had done more, because there was a lot of areas that had really a big impact after we were finished our collection. So where do we go from here? We hope to make this spring event an annual, actually biannual one. We're hoping to do a spring cleanup and a fall cleanup from now on. We want other schools to get involved. We want every school to take care of their little neighborhood. And we would also like to request the return of the Adopt a Street program. So I remember as a child, and that's how it happens, right? You start it when you're young and then you keep doing it. I remember adopting St. Peter Avenue, I think, with my mother through uni, which was then Casper Place. So every year, we would get together all the staff, all the kids, and just walk St. Peter and clean up. So I remember fondly, it was a great experience, doing that with that staff, and I want our kids, my kids, to do the same. So ideas, we have a Student for Hire Day that we're hoping to get off the ground as a fundraiser for Bathurst High School. And I see this not being the sole way that they can volunteer in our community, but I certainly see it being one opportunity for our students to get involved. So if a business were to, for example, adopt a street, they would need some help doing it. Our students could be recruited to go help, but that is something that I want you to think about a little bit, because it is coming, I hope, in the future. I would love to see this get off the ground, where we would have a day where students would be out and doing whatever task needs to be done in our community as a fundraiser for our school. So just a little tidbit of something that I hope is going to come in the near future for our school. So thanks again to the city, because you really were a great partner in this. I'd like to thank Lee Stever, he was really at our beck and call, he was always available when we needed him. Mr. Pettigrew, Mr. Willett came out to visit at one of our collection sites. Again, it's always nice for the students to see that their work was appreciated, so thank you.
Thank you very much. After I was elected as mayor, one of the first things I did is I met with Shannon and Audrey. And one of the main reasons for that was because of all the cleanup and everything, and all the work that you've been doing in the community. And I wanted to pick your brain, and you wanted to chat with me to give me an idea of your vision. And some of these committees that we've come forward after speaking with council has a big impact of our conversation that we've had. So as you will see on point three, we are bringing and we are want to review the Adopt a Street. I think it's a wonderful idea, and there's a lot of people, a lot of businesses that have approached me saying that they are willing to adopt the street as well. So thank you for the wonderful work that you've done with the Bathurst High School students. Shannon, I hear that you are one of these teachers that students will be talking about you for a long time. Even as they get older, don't always remember that one teacher, you're definitely going to be one of those. I hear nothing but great things about you, and thank you for everything that you do for your city and for the region, and it's greatly appreciated. Does council have any questions, comments? Oh, hold on, I have councillor Honda's, I'm just gonna take this off. Councillor Honda.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, congratulations on your initiative. Councillor Knowles and myself are bringing up a beautification committee, and basically some of the points that you brought in, the Adopt a Street, there's also Adopt a Fire Hydrant. There's all sorts of things that we could do as a community, and it starts with our youth for sure, and I love the idea of the partnership. And I know there's probably businesses out there that would love to, but just don't have the staff to. So this would be a perfect way to incorporate both, and at the end of it all, if they could just make a donation to the school or some sort, I think we could work that out. We actually have a little bit of a presentation after on it, so I just wanted to take hats off to it. I'm a member of the Kids' Club of Bathurst, and we adopted Yaw Hall, and we've done it now for the last, since I've been a member in 99. And when we started, we had picked up over 40 bags, and now we're down to about seven or eight. So I think people have pride in their properties, and especially along that road where the grass is green right to the road, so they fill in the holes, and so there's less garbage out there. And very popular alcohol bottles and cans, stuff like that, so... But when councillor Knowles and myself get going on this, we'll get your information, and if we can just, if we have a meeting, if you're interested in showing up. Basically, we'd love to get it going back, because there's a lot of potential for our final city, so we just gotta, like I said, I always said this, we don't pat ourselves on the back enough when it comes to good things. So we gotta get this stuff out there, and congratulations again, it's a great initiative on your part.
Thank you.
Perfect. We've actually been talking as council that we are going to adopt our own street, and we're going to take care of cleaning it as well. So we're, I think the buy-in is definitely there. Councillor Anderson.
Thank you, Your Worship. I just want to congratulate you on your work. Fantastic job. I'm sure the kids are very proud of themselves and what they're doing, especially seeing the positive recognition that's coming back to them, so I think it's fantastic. And the mayor is right when she says you're going to be one of those teachers that the kids are going to remember. I know my kids remember you, and there's a lot more kids to come.
Thank you.
I've taught some of the councillors.
I am one of those students.
Perfect. Councillor Burnett.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, through you to Shannon, thank you very much, Shannon. And I think the key word that goes with you is champion. You are a champion that make things happen. Without you, this would not have happened, and I see Audrey with you today, and she makes things happen as well. So congratulations to you and her for all the things you do for our community, appreciate it.
I would actually ask the two of you to stick around and listen to this meeting, so you'll be able to see where we're going in our vision. And maybe we can certainly, you know, chat as councillor Honda was saying. So thank you for your presentation. Thank you, everybody, and, you know, hopefully if we start taking more pride in our city, people will think twice before throwing something down in the ditch. I remember seeing Audrey Reynolds with her grandchildren and her son cleaning on Bridge Street. And she was teaching her grandchildren about, you know, cleaning and picking up, and they picked quite a bit on a cold day. So, you know, we ask our citizens of Bathurst, please take pride, take the time, and think twice before throwing something out the window. Okay, which brings us to number three, the overview of present policy, 2015 Adopt a Street. So Mr. Pettigrew.
Through to Mr. McGlagan.
Mr. McGlagan. Oh, okay.
The policy as is, is how we currently operate the Adopt a Street.
So I read up on it and I reviewed it, so I, there's not a problem. I mean, children under 11 years old need to consent from the parents. There would be no issues if we were to bring it forward. Does council have any questions concerning the Adopt a Street? So we're all in agreeance that we bring the Adopt a Street back? Perfect. So to businesses out there, to families, if you are interested in wanting to adopt a street, please contact City Hall or call me personally, 544-1168. I'll take your name and phone number and we'll make it happen, or I'll send you to Mrs. Saint-Laurent. So thank you very much. I think this is a wonderful initiative to bring back and to take pride in our city. Merci. So requests. So we do have a request from the Alzheimer's Society. Nous avons une demande de la société d'Alzheimer, Madame Saint-Laurent. Oh, excusez-moi.
Nous avons reçu une demande écrite, c'est ça, de la société Alzheimer. Ils demandent d'avoir la patinoire Richelieu pour un événement le 29 mai 2022. Ça serait pour la journée au complet, puis ils demandent ça à aucun frais. Si les membres du conseil sont intéressés de partager le centre Richelieu, la patinoire Richelieu.
Do you want Miss Saint-Laurent to repeat it in English? Good? No? Okay. Any questions? Oh. Councillor Anderson.
Thank you, Your Worship. What is, did they specify what the request is, like what the event is?
It's their walk. Every year, they have the walk for Alzheimer's, and it's a fundraiser.
Last year, they raised $10,000. For 2021, they raised $10,000. Does council have, oh, councillor Willett?
I'd like to move that we do give them the rink at no cost.
Okay. Do I have someone to second? Councillor LeBlanc? Perfect. We're going ahead. Thank you.
So we'll bring a resolution next Monday and make it formal.
Okay, perfect. Oh, I see that councillor Willett, sorry, I, no, okay, no, all right, I'm shaking you off, perfect. Okay, so we have Papermakers Golf Tournament. Councillor Knowles.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Throughout its 65-year-old history, the Bathurst Papermakers played senior or intermediate hockey, filling their own and opponents' rinks from the Quebec border to small towns of Newfoundland. Senior and intermediate hockey were the top two levels of adult amateur game in Canada. The Bathurst Papermakers were known by sports fans throughout eastern Canada and were a source of great pride to our community, our city and surrounding communities. It was the 1971 edition of the Papermakers that brought Bathurst to measure of fame that spread beyond the Maritimes. A decision was made by municipal council of the day to host a National Hardy Cup final if the team made the playoffs and earned its way into the tournament. After winning the New Brunswick Maritime and Eastern Canadian Playoff Rounds, the Papermakers had their wish, a berth in the Hardy Cup National Final, which was played right here in Bathurst. The Papermakers would defeat the Rose Town Red Wings from Saskatchewan, three games to nothing in a best-of-five series to claim the Canadian Intermediate A Hockey Championship. Captain Joe Hashi hoisted the Hardy Cup on behalf of everyone in northern New Brunswick. This team of home-brewed players was a national champion. For those who remember what went on in the Old Bathurst Arena in the spring of 1971, the Papermakers offered a definition of the phrase "that's hockey." A 50th anniversary golf tournament to commemorate this achievement is being organized by a dedicated local committee and will be held at the Squire Green Golf Club on Friday, August 20. I am asking for the support of mayor and council in the form of purchasing golf shirts and hats to present to the remaining 14 members of this team that brought so much pride and joy to the citizens of Bathurst and surrounding communities in the year 1971. Thank you for your consideration on this matter.
Does council have any questions or any objections? So everybody agrees? I totally agree as well. 50 years is something to be said, and there's still 14 of them, and I think that I'm actually planning on going to the tournament as well. I can't golf, I'm not really good at it, but certainly show my support, and we can be there, and if some councils want to do play golf, maybe I can go mini putt a little bit. But I totally agree, and we can make this happen. I think that we could do something special for them in recognition, and it's time. Perfect. Thank you. Thank you. Okay, so we have committee updates. Mise à jour des comités. Coronation Park Committee, Committee du parc Coronation. Councillor Anderson.
Thank you, Your Worship. Just a bit of an update, the federal government has come out with an initiative, grants, if you would, for communities across the country. I think, I want to say there's about $150 million available, is that correct, Andrew? Correct me if I'm wrong. And I forget the name of the program, anyway.
Community revitalization is key, apparently.
It's for, yeah, it's for, it's for community, basically doing things within your community. Coronation Park, as you know, is the main focal part, park for the city of Bathurst. Many parks years ago were decommissioned because it was too high of a cost for the city to maintain all these parks. So there was a lot of them that was decommissioned, and we've really been focusing on Coronation Park. We have a fantastic committee in place, and these individuals, some of them have been on this committee for about 18 years. So that being said, the park hasn't received any funding from the city for two years, and prior to that, what we had been receiving had decreased substantially. We've gone out to the Rotary and they've been very kind with the donations they've given over the years. However, we're at the point now where we've outgrown the playground equipment that we have in the park. We have, like I go by there often, and that main play structure that's there is packed all the time. And we need another play structure for children that are older, because 10 and 12-year-olds still want to play in the park as well. And what we have there right now really isn't conducive to, like, the pre-teenage kids. So that being said, our committee has gone ahead and applied for funding through this project that the federal government has come out with. We've applied for $200,000, hoping that we're going to get that funding so that we can extend the current playground structures that are there.
And I truly hope that they approve it. Because the Coronation Park, there's a lot that can be done, there's much more improvement that can happen. So hopefully, if anybody within the federal elected officials is hearing this...
Give me the money.
We need the money. Perfect. Thank you for the update, Councillor Anderson. So now we go to 5.2 Wellness Community Intergenerational Committee. Communauté mieux aide, Committee intergénérationnel. Councillor Burnett.
Thanks, Madam Mayor. Intergenerational and wellness, it's quite a title, and I've been giving it very much thought as to what this new committee might do. I believe it would be necessary, though, to cross over and involve many of the other committees of council, because they all, a lot of them deal with wellness, just like councillor Anderson just said about the park. I've been over there with my grandchildren, that's a great park for that age level, fantastic. I met somebody from Alberta there the other day, and they said, boy, this is some improvement over when I was here in high school. And I said, yes, it is, and thanks to champions like we have here next to me that made that happen. For example, when you cross over committees, like I'm also on the Arts and Culture Committee, and this should not only involve the arts society, but also the multicultural society with all our art, with the richness that these people bring from many different countries that we can put on display in our community. Paburo First Nations, schools, both high schools, middle schools, as well as elementary schools, our youth of all ages should be involved. And seniors' homes and CCNB. I've been to many exhibits at CCNB, fantastic art people up there, and of all ages, again. And it does bring out the wellness of the day in these people. Now, COVID has been terribly hurt on this over the last 15 months, but it's starting to turn the corner, and hopefully now we can meet again, we can go to an exhibit, we can gather with people again. Parks are for all ages, as I just mentioned with Coronation, Victoria, for example, with their gardens, and where the community meets there all the time, that's a wonderful park. Yaw Hall, especially seasonal people right now that are in on their cottages, there's so much activity. I was down there today, they were playing volleyball, there were people just on the beach, people walking and running, even in this heat. So it involves a lot of people from a lot of places around Canada, not only just Bathurst. The trails, thank goodness to the Trails Committee have passed, Dr. Daigle and his group did a wonderful job. The waterfront park, the trails, and more, there's so many in our city and in excellent, excellent locations for people to use. Take South Bathurst, for example, a great trail along the waterfront in South Bathurst. It's excellent, next to the basin. But, you know, along that trail, excuse me, along that trail, we have Terry Fox School, we have the Southern Conference Seniors Home. We will, I think, have a new daycare center. Wouldn't it be nice to see them all connected to the trails, with little trails, and have those trails paved, so people can get out there with their walkers, with their wheelchairs, or younger people with their rollerblades, or their bikes, or just walking? And a lot of people walk it now. So we have to get these trails finished and connected to places like I've just mentioned, and paved, of course, so that everybody can use them. Music, arts, wellness. I met with Mr. Chris Daigle of the Downtown Revitalization Group, and we agreed, we need music out and about. We need music on Main, we need music at the waterfront. Of all ages, though, not just talent that, you know, has developed over the years. While I was supply teaching over the last three years at Bathurst High School, the talent I saw there musically, wow, would just blow you away. Wouldn't it be nice on a Saturday afternoon to see some students from either school downtown, King and Main and New Park, which I was told is connected to the power, and have them just jamming there, and people enjoying the music? Because some of them are so talented, they can sing, they can play the guitar, they can play instruments. And there are champions at those schools that might make this work or could make it work. So we need music there downtown, we need music, again, I believe it's going to start sooner than later, and getting groups together, again, because of COVID, it's just going to take a little bit of imagination right now. Again, because of COVID, it's just gonna take a little bit of imagination right now. It's one way to get the youth out, it's one more to get seniors out. And I would also like to see these young singers and young performers go into seniors homes and put on a little show and do some talent for these seniors. Because through COVID, they've had a rough time. You know, not allowed but one person to visit them every two weeks maybe, and now it's changing a little bit. Wouldn't, they love youth, to see these young people come in and sing and entertain for them would be fantastic. But we need champions to do that, like we saw tonight with champions that we have presented on the cleanup by Shannon, do sit. Art exhibits, we need more art exhibits. Local artists are fantastic, First Nations artists are fantastic. School art exhibits, unbelievable. I hope they do continue that program because Cynthia DeCoste is retired this year and boy, does she have a wonderful program. So art of all ages can be on display. And where do you put it? So people can get access to it. City Hall has got a wonderful spot here going up and down the stairs. But in seniors homes, have some of this artwork put in there. And at the museum down the street. Or with cooperation of Mr. Dagel over here, storefronts downtown. All across the top of the storefronts would be nice to see some art going through there from the schools, from the local art people, out where people are. You know, you don't have to go inside somewhere to find it. And of course, the art on the art shop that's on the waterfront or in the waterfront. There are so many ideas and we have a great leadership group here at City Hall and with council. And it will take some time to organize and coordinate, but teamwork, a crossover of committees and a few champions from our schools, community can make much happen in the very near future. We're just getting going with this council. I look forward to the challenge. And if anybody here has ideas to like throw out, I'm all open. I'll even turn my hearing aids on so I can hear you. Yeah, so we'll go from there. So thank you very much, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. So councillor Burnett, so would you be open for people to contact you if you have any ideas or anything they would like to share?
Most definitely. I mentioned teamwork right from the get-go and I got elected and teamwork is the way that we can accomplish some of these things I've been talking about. Thank you.
I think, you know, with new council and we've had a few meetings where we've talked and yes, we want to focus on what are three to five top priorities. There's going to be economically development, you know, there's a vision. But we also know that that community buy-in and have our community involved in the beautification and the well-being. COVID has been difficult for everyone and this council is all in on that aspect as well, which is very refreshing and interesting to see where we are going. Which brings us to our next one, which is the Beautification Committee. Councillor Knowles and Deputy Mayor Honda's. So I will give you both the mic in case.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm just gonna get the ball rolling. We really haven't had a chance, councillor Knowles and myself, to get together and really put what we want. What my vision is, I'd like to see us, and we had a presentation earlier with the kids from BHS, basically to bring a little bit of pride back to our city. We have such a great city. We get so many good comments and just it's up to us now to really showcase our potential. What we're looking at is basically what like the BHS students did. They go and clean in the roads, the Adopt a Street program. We're gonna revamp it, we're gonna look at it. There's a lot of good things that come with that. Basically, if a company wants to adopt a street, they get a sign at the front of the road, which is good advertising. Like they said in their presentation, the vests, the gloves, everything's donated by the city. They'll actually pick up the garbage and dispose of it for you. So there's a little bit of less work that you gotta do. There's also something that we forgot about, there's almost 1,000 fire hydrants in this city and some of them look really shabby. But the city will offer the paint and the brushes to paint though. So along with Adopt a Street, maybe we can incorporate Adopt a Fire Hydrant, look at it. I know, because if you go down to smaller rural communities like in Petulache for a change, for an example, I was driving down there a couple of Sundays ago. I saw a fire hydrant with four poles, nice and nice red, bright, they could see them from miles. Then I was driving down our main street here and there's one in particular. My God, it just doesn't make any sense why we can't do that. And councillor Knowles and myself were approached by a local businessman that this is basically what he wanted to do. He wants us to start beautifying our city. So once we get the letters in and with the help of Audrey Reynolds and Shannon Levine and maybe if we can get a committee, we've tried this before, former councillor Lee Seaver and myself. And we had a meeting and we had maybe two or three people that were interested. This is gonna have to be a team effort. It's gonna have to be more than just businesses. Citizens are gonna have to come across and do stuff. We're still looking like for fire hydrants. I know in other cities, they have them where you can paint little firemen, little police officers. But we've asked that question and we've never got an answer back from our fire chief. So I'm gonna be really pressing on him to see if it's okay. So if you have a fire hydrant in your front yard, instead of painting it red and gray, if you want to paint it like a little Bonhomme, more power to you. And it looks good, basically. So I think for myself, I'd love to see us get on this. You know, the time of year for us, being so new, we do have to get together and have a meeting. Dale and myself, we'll call a meeting for the public if anybody's interested, we'll give you the information. But I do agree that it needs to be for the pride of our city and just to clean up. And feel free to call myself on the city website, Dale's is there too. Mrs. Saint Laurent, if you want anything done in this city, you call her. So basically, that's what you got. So, you know, just if, we're gonna help you as much as we can, but you gotta be willing to help. I'm talking to everybody in the city, companies, citizens, the city council. We've took it upon ourselves and Mayor Chamberlain told us, we're gonna take a street and we're gonna go and clean it on a Saturday morning. And we'll paint a few hydrants if we have to. If you need any help, if you don't have enough manpower in your company, feel free to give us a call. We know there's Bathursts High students that are looking, you know, maybe just for a donation, they'll be able to help out. I'm more than willing to help out a company if they're short on manpower. But basically just bring a little bit of pride back to us. We've done so many good things in the last five years, it'd be nice to just keep it going for the next five years, so.
Perfect, thank you. Councillor Knowles, did you want to add anything?
No, I'd just like to reiterate what Ricky said. We're gonna meet soon and we'll set some goals and objectives. And the committee, we're gonna work with Audrey and Shannon and whoever else wants to get on board. And once we get some momentum going, there's, you know, there's a lot to be done. It's an ongoing issue, but I think, I think we can do a lot of good things. And I thanked them tonight for their presentation.
Perfect, thank you so much. Councillor LeBlanc.
Yeah. First of all, I'd like to thank Stephen for your presentation, your update, and Ricky. But this is really a plea to all the citizens of this city. Really, get involved in these committees. Come forward, we'll, I mean, be, take pride in this city and be part of the solution. And that's really all I wanted to put out there. Thank you both again.
Thank you. And for the citizens that are interested, yes, you can contact any one of us. You can message us on Messenger, let us know, give us your name, give us your phone number. And we'd be more than happy to follow up with you, which we will be. Thank you very much, conseiller LeBlanc. It's really appreciated as well. Bon. Do we have any questions from council? No? We're good? Mr. Pettigrew, so for the fire hydrant, I'll go to you.
Thank you, Worship. We had a discussion in-house, the Worship, as Madam Mayor mentioned, with regards to looking at some information on the fire hydrants for painting. I can answer that. We had a discussion with the chief late last week. And some areas are color-coded based on pressure because they have different colors for pressure in certain areas. But within our, within our city, that's fine. There is, the pressure is normal and normalized, so we're okay to paint them. So he doesn't have any concerns with, as long as it's, you know, easy, visible and not camouflaged into an area that's hard to find. Also, the biggest things, the concerns from an operations point of view is making sure there's no obstruction. So there are some guidelines, not just the painting, but beautification of that areas to make sure they're free and accessible. So definitely, we can, we can work with that group as well and set some guidelines because there are some setback distances that you would need to be able to work with. But definitely, the only concerns in other areas are because of color-coded, but not an issue in Bathurst.
Maybe we can approach our firefighter volunteers are willing to give us a hand as well. But it's true, we have to be careful once we do decide to paint them. You know, we need somebody there that is aware of how and what can we do and not do. So, perfect. Well, this concludes our meeting for this committee as a whole. I want to wish everybody a great evening. Thank you for coming and thank you for listening and being part of being here with us on Facebook Live. It's so different now with COVID. Everything's just, you know, you can reach everybody now, they don't even have to come City Hall anymore. So this meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much, have a great evening, everyone. Bonsoir.